Good evening, everybody. It's a rainy day in Minnesota, so wherever you are, this is a good day to have a virtual meeting. And before I get started, I'll give you two ground rules and as we were just discussing, it looks like this will be the last virtual meeting after two years, at least for a while, for now. Good to see everybody at the computer, and I'm really looking forward to seeing you in person in a week. This is Charlie Zalay, Chair of the Mitch Bond Council. This is the committee of the whole meeting, April 20th, 2022, and if you are watching remotely from the public, we do invite comments to our public email address, which is public.info@ebtc.mn.us. We'll respond. In the meantime, I'll call the meeting to order with, I think Bridget calling the roll. I asked Liz yesterday if she is not blurting out our names in the middle of a bad dream in the midnight. She did not do, she does not do that, but Bridget, you get to be the one of the last to do this, so please call the roll.
Councilmember Barber.
Here.
Shamba.
Here.
Bradson.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Lilligrin.
Here.
Lindstrom.
Here.
Muse.
Here.
Pacheco. Pacheco. Turner.
Here.
Vento.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Zaren. Zaren. Chair Zelli.
I'm here. And we have a quorum. And in reviewing the agenda, unless anybody has any objection, we have two information items, and it's really great that we have some guests. So without objection, I was assume the agenda is approved, which brings us to the minutes from the committee of the whole meeting held April 6th, 2022. Is there a motion and a second to approve the minutes?
Lilligrin moves approval.
Turner would second that.
Thank you, thank you. Any discussion, corrections? All right, hearing none, Bridget. For the last time, call the roll.
Councilmember Barber.
Aye.
Shamba.
Aye.
Bradson.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lilligrin.
Aye.
Lindstrom.
Aye.
Muse.
Aye.
Pacheco. Pacheco. Turner.
Aye.
Vento.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Zaren. Zaren. Chair Zelli.
Aye. The minutes are approved, which takes us to our substantive meeting. You know, and I think throughout this meeting, we're really going to have a chance to engage with real stories and partners. So welcome, but also kind of talk about our planning process as we are trying to advance an equitable region, and that is one of the highest goals of this council. I think this is really a very timely and needed conversation. We'll have a chance to learn and also maybe give some input. So maybe to start it off, I see you Angela Torres and Rea. Maybe you'd like to introduce our city guests, but welcome everybody. We're really thrilled that you're able to join us today. So Angela, are you kicking it off?
Yes, I am. Thanks, Chair Zelli.
Right.
Hello, everyone. I'm Angela Torres. Just as a reminder, Senior Manager of Local Planning Assistance in the Community Development Division. You've seen me many times with my team and with or with other council colleagues presenting information about comp plans. CDC members probably substantially more so. We've also shared additional analysis from comp plans as part of the comp plan composite of land use in all three council systems, as well as housing, climate, public health, and aging. At our last meeting, we concluded the composite work with our analysis on equity in planning. So as we shift to talking about the 2050 Regional Development Guide, we could share more with you about what we hear from communities, about their experiences with planning, with implementation, and with other initiatives and programs. But I thought that it might be more impactful for you to hear directly from local governments themselves. Continuing the equity conversation today, I've invited representatives from the cities of Belle Plaine in District Four and Bloomington in District Five to share their equity stories with the council. You'll hear directly from them, and we get to highlight exceptional local planning efforts. So it's a win-win. They will discuss in more detail how their communities are planning for equity and moving forward to implement initiatives and programs that further equitable outcomes for all residents of their communities. Each city will share their own community story, and then Raya F. Miley, Senior Planner in Local Planning Assistance, will facilitate a discussion with our guest speakers, after which there'll be an opportunity for council members to engage in the conversation. I'd like to first just welcome and briefly introduce our guest, Julie Farnham. Give a wave, Julie. There you go. Is a senior planner at the city of Bloomington. She's been at the city for 16 years. Her focus is on long-range planning, including district plans, and she managed the update of the 2040 Plan for the city. Also with the city of Bloomington is Mike Palermo. Hi, Mike. He's a long-range planner for the city of Bloomington. He's been there for five years. He has experience in community development, transportation, housing, and long-range plans. And then Cynthia is here from the city of Belle Plaine. Cynthia Smith Strack is the Community Development Director for the city of Belle Plaine. She's been with the city for seven years, and she managed the city of Belle Plaine's 2040 Plan. Julie and Mike will share Bloomington's story with you first, and then we'll hear from Cynthia. Raya will take it after that. Julie, the floor is yours.
Technological difficulties. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having us. I am going to start by turning it over to my colleague, Mike Palermo, who will walk you through some of our demographic information to let you know who we are.
Thanks, Julie. Let's see if I can get this working. Is everyone able to see the presentation?
Yes.
All right. So yeah, as Julie said, I'll start off with a little bit about who we are. Bloomington is the fourth largest city in Minnesota. Just the 2020 census, we came in just under 90,000. We expect that we're a little bit higher than that, knowing a couple of urban buildings have opened up since the 2020 census. We have about 35,000 households, and we're a city that grows during the day. We have about 80,000 people employed in Bloomington, and that's down from a high of about 90,000 pre-pandemic. We talked about in our comp plan how we've changed a lot in the last 40 years. We used 1970 as a comparison. We were 99% white, and in 2010, we were 80% white. We talked about how our younger population's growing at a much faster rate. Looking at our kindergarten class was almost 50% non-white population. And really, those are outdated statistics. We've already now with the 2020 census, we're closer to about 68% of our population being white, non-Hispanic. So we can see that it's drastically changing. And our school district is over 50% black indigenous people of color population. So we're already, we're growing rapidly in our BIPOC community. But in our comp plan, we also know that city is pretty big, so we look at more granular geographic focus. Our east side tends to be a little bit younger. Our west side is older. We have some senior living facilities in our west side. Our lifecycle housing, our east side, we've seen an increase in household size. So more families are living on our east side than on our west side, and makes sense on when those properties were developed. And then we also looked at our poverty is a higher rate on the east side compared to some of our west side. And where non-English or limited English-speaking population live, and this is important when we do our outreach and engagement that we'll talk about later. But even this, while we look at our geographic differences, we know as a whole, we're changing. So while we do have those concentrations in our east side, our west side is also growing. So this shows our 2020 population where we see on our west side, a lot of those census tracts have grown, in some cases, over 100% change in the BIPOC population. So it is a citywide change that we're, shift that we're seeing. And why are we looking at our racial racial demographics? Well, we know we have some big disparities. This shows that our housing owner versus renter occupied units, our white, non-Hispanic population own at about 75%, whereas our black African-American households own only at 20%. So that's a big difference when we're looking at how we craft our housing policies or how we look at economic factors. We know that Bloomington has a large retail and service industry and hospitality industry, which has lower-paying jobs. It's about 20, 25% of our workforce here in Bloomington can't afford to live here in Bloomington, knowing that those wages that you earn in those industries, you can't purchase a median value home in Bloomington. So these are things that we looked at in our comp plan, and how do we encourage that choice in our housing to understand that there is these disparities that exist. With that, I'll turn it over to Julie. They'll talk a little bit more about Bloomington.
Thanks, Mike. I'm just gonna do some real high-level highlights of Bloomington, which I'm sure many of you already know, but just in case you weren't aware. So Bloomington is well-served by regional transit. We've got the Blue Line with four LRT stations that terminates at the Mall of America. We've got the Red Line that one of the terminuses is at the Mall of America, and then that goes down to the south, down towards Lakeville. And then just recently opened is the Orange Line coming through with two major stop areas in Bloomington. So we are well-served by not only these more rapid transit, but also just transit in general. We also are home to several national and regional destinations. Of course, we have the, our whole southern-eastern border is the Minnesota Valley National Wildlife Refuge, so it's one of our key assets. We also are blessed with some major regional parks on the west side, Highland Bush Anderson. We also have several regional trails that have gone in in the last few years. And then, of course, we've got the Mall of America is a major destination in our city. Bloomington has long focused focused redevelopment efforts, and primarily in these three redevelopment districts. And we talk about this a lot in our comp plan. And with the, we have done development district plans for each one of these three districts. And now we're really starting to look more in the neighborhoods, and particularly on the east side. We've got what we call, we've sort of designated a big chunk of the east side as the gateway district, because we know that there's, that's an area where the, there are more more poverty in that area, certainly more racially diverse in that area. So that's an area that we want to focus redevelopment efforts. One of the things, as we were talking about this meeting, and in terms of how did we approach equity? Well, as it turns out, we had a lot of kind of concurrent or in, in-progress activities that really aligned with a lot of the same strategies in the, in the conference of plan, a lot of those goals in the conference of plan, not only with equity, but sustainability and some of those other areas of the comp plan that aren't required elements of the comp plan. So as you can see here, back in 2016, the city council adopted a strategic plan with these priorities, and you can see equity and inclusion was one of them. And that was really when the city started to focus a lot of efforts around equity and inclusion. So this is a big laundry list of some of those things. So the city of Bloomington participated in the Government Alliance for Race and Equity, GARE. I know Met Council did as well. And we had two years where we, oh, that's a typo. We had 2015 and 2016 where we participated in that. And so we had folks from across the organization at various levels of the organization participate in that. The city council adopted an equity vision statement in 2017. We've been doing training, diversity and equity trainings since 2018. And also, our HR department has really started to look at the barriers to diversifying their workforce. That was kind of one of the first things that the city wanted to take a look at, because we know that internally, our staff is more than 90% white, and, and we want to better reflect our community, which, as Mike pointed out, is becoming much more diverse. In 2019, the city hired a racial equity coordinator who has been leading a lot of these efforts. We now have in many of the departments racial equity action teams. So those are department-driven groups that come up with their own kinds of activities of what are the things that we can do internally, as well as externally to advance our equity initiatives, our equity goals. Our racial equity coordinator and city council then adopted a racial equity business plan in 2020. And more recently, the council directed our staff to participate in the Just Deeds Coalition. And this is the vision statement that the, the council adopted. Another major thing that happened in about those same times, so 2018, because along with our recognizing that we're becoming much more diverse, and we wanted to be a much more participatory kind of a government, we came up with a, created a, a department or division that is focused on outreach and engagement. So we have four, it's a division of four, maybe more than that now, of staff that are focused entirely on helping each of the departments internally, but also on establishing partnerships externally and building on those. And so that's been, that was very helpful as well with our, you know, they were, several of them were in place prior to them actually becoming formally this coed division. And so we had help from them during our comp plan in terms of some of the outreach.
I'll just jump in. That's me in the picture on the right with the backpack. This was kind of the start of coed. We were looking at with our 98th Street Station area plan, how do we engage our, you know, community with different needs. And so this is where we were doing a walking audit with our ADA coordinator and people in the community, just to see where are those barriers as we're looking at pedestrian improvement. So that was an example of where they have connections in the community that they're cultivating that we can tap into when we're doing our outreach.
A great example, more recently, just got adopted last September, was the Park System Master Plan Update. And they spent a lot of time focusing on, on equity and outreach during this whole process. So that's a really great example, and the outcome of that has been, it was really well-received. So switching a little bit more to focus on our approach in our comp planning process. So one of the big differences in our 2040 comp plan approach is we had a, we created a citizen advisory group. So that's us down in the lower right corner. And we were very intentional about getting representation across the city, and we were trying to be as diverse as possible. There was actually like an application process that folks had to go through. But this group met for about 15 months, I believe it was, on a monthly basis. And they worked with staff to work through the whole update process on, and each of the elements, et cetera. And so that was a new experience for us in terms of how we approached comp planning. And it was really, it was a really positive experience. We did a lot more outreach than we have in the past as well. And you can see the map on the left. Is, this was just at one of our, our meetings, we would always ask people to let us know where they live and where they, if they work in the city, where they work, so that we could get some kind of sense of where folks were, were coming from. We did a lot of outreach to different kinds of places. You know, we went to schools, we went to senior centers. The photo up in the right, we went to a Spanish-speaking church. We had facilitators who spoke Spanish. And so most of the people who came to that were Spanish-speaking as a first language. So we, we really tried to go, as they say, go where, where the, the people are. We were at farmers markets, we were at events, and we did a lot more outreach than we had in the past. One other thing, I guess I will say, kind of in closing is, you know, we, when we first started our, our comp planning, and it goes back to some of those demographics that Mike brought up, that he spoke about at the beginning, we, as part of that city council strategic planning effort that took place in 2016, we put together what we called the data book. And that's where we were doing all this comparison between 1970 and, and 2010. And it was, you know, we were kind of jokingly saying, this isn't your grandfather's Bloomington. And, you know, we were very conscious of and intentional about the fact that we are changing. And really kind of the motto of this whole planning process was about choice. And how do we, because we have different kinds of needs. We're not as, you know, sort of monochromatic as, as we used to be, and we have lots of different needs. So it was really about choice, choice in housing, providing more choice, providing more access to housing, to transportation, to parks and to other kinds of amenities and, and community facilities, whether that be schools or, or safety or whatever. But it was really, so that was kind of an underlying thread through our whole comp plan. It was all about, it was all about choice. And I don't, that's kind of the end of our presentation, Mike. I don't know if you want to add any final thoughts?
I should say, it's gone much more beyond our comp plan. As you can see with that laundry list, it's kind of, the comp plan worked in tandem, I think, as this growing initiative within the city. So I think it's important to recognize that this is kind of ingrained in how we operate. It's one of our three lenses that we, we follow through, and I think it'll, as we get into the next comp plan, I think it will be much more obvious. I think it was a little more of an undertone in our comp plan, and I think next time it'll be more specifically called out.
Thank you both. I really appreciate this start to our conversation. I will ask Cynthia to invite Cynthia to go ahead and share her screen now, and...
Mr. Chair and Angela, is the plan to take questions at the end? Is that it, or I had a question on the slide?
It is. Would you mind holding your question? Obviously, I'll defer to you, but...
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay. Cynthia is going to share her screen herself, so let's just pause for a moment.
Are you seeing this share?
No, Cynthia, not yet. If you need me to, I do have it pulled up in PowerPoint version, and I can share.
I just have to, yeah, why don't we do it that way, Angela? And then I'll just let you know when to advance.
That sounds good.
Perfect.
So I will ask now if council members can see my screen.
Perfect. Well, we are a rural growth center. Belle Plaine is in Scott County. So very, very different than the city of Bloomington, and very much rural in nature. We are midway between Minneapolis and Mankato. Our population is 7,400. The city operates its own wastewater treatment plant and its own water distribution system. 7,400. The city operates its own wastewater treatment plant and it's apart from, it's apart from a lot of the, the metro as well. We have the lowest income in Scott County. Prior Lake, Savage, Shakopee, Jordan, New Prague, Alcoa de Market have higher incomes than what our average is here in Belle Plaine. We don't have national builders. We have very few regional builders. Most of our builders are local. And we have very little commercial and industrial growth, being we're a small community on the fringe of the metro. We lack private sector development partners. And that's, I think, an important point and kind of the driving force behind our comp plan update. Angela, could we advance? So our process was really locally led and intentional, and I say conversation-based. Equity and other thrive elements were incorporated into our comprehensive plan, but they weren't directly addressed. We didn't convene a panel. Instead, we went out to the community, and we reported back on conversations we were having. And by we, I mean elected officials and appointed officials and members of staff and business owners and Chamber of Commerce representatives and leaders. So we tried to identify what type of conversations we were having and what types of equity issues we were seeing, or if we could draw a thread between the built environment and our conversations we were having. We couched that, those conversations mostly in the risks that created headwinds for growth. That was the number one driver of our comprehensive plan. Our comp plan process was a catalyst for trying to synthesize those conversations and then move the needle as we move forward in time. Again, it was locally led. We didn't have a planning consultant. We have a city engineer consultant that helped us with the more technical elements, but locally led by city staff and the public. And I think it resulted in more time being spent on the comprehensive plan, a lot of local knowledge being incorporated into the plan, and ultimately a hyper-local plan. Next slide, Angela. So these are just factors that we as staff talked about, and we feel that they shaped our comp plan organization and process. So we kicked off our process in very early 2016, so in February of 2016. We were in a period of slowed growth, and we viewed our update as a minor update, and I don't mean an administrative update. I mean minor as in a lot of the data conclusions didn't change much. So our MusA didn't change. Our staging didn't really change. Our future land use plan didn't change that much. At that time, we had a like-minded city administrator who taxed, who tasked our department with making the plan meaningful and results-oriented. And that kind of drove the structure of our plan, which is a little different than other plans as well. We also had in 2016 a majority changeover in council. Council came in on a controversial issue and kind of gelled as a five-member council with a weak mayor system. And I think that resulted, at least for the And I think that resulted, at least for the duration of the planning process, in a high-functioning council and a council that was primarily apolitical and open to ideas and community-minded, you know, how can we make our community a better place for generations to come? Staff role was to lead, listen, and to try to connect the threads, to provide context for discussion, and then again, just to listen and clarify to everyone we were talking to in the community, and then kind of connect those threads in an acceptable narrative. So if we can advance, Angela? So as I alluded to previously, the driver of equity and really all of our comp plan work was economics. Growth is needed to be able to provide services now and in the future. We don't have the luxury of not planning for major expansions in wastewater or transportation systems or water treatment systems. So we have to grow in order to service our existing debt and to create enough savings to be able to afford those large expanses when growth demands it. So council's number one priority was sustained growth over the long term. Our discussions throughout the community with the chamber, with businesses, with our electeds, and with our service boards, committees, and commissions. The answer to the question, what makes that happen, were people in spaces. So that was really the fundamental starting point for our update and our equity discussions. We asked the question, when we were talking to people deliberately, what do you need to be successful? What do you think other people need to be successful? What makes you uncomfortable? What makes you comfortable? And we spent a lot of time talking about complete community and complete systems, complete housing, complete transportation, complete park systems. Our vision statement in the comp plan is to be a perpetually sustainable, complete, and livable city for all people, seasons, and generations. And that was a deliberate vision statement accepted or adopted by the council. Again, we talked extensively with community members about what they needed to feel a sense of belonging, what they needed to invest in the community, what they needed to stay in the community. That involved into, or evolved into discussions about differences in mental health and social health. How do people feel that sense of belonging? How do they interact with each other, with spaces, with their government? We talked a lot about fit environments, about community capacity building. So how do we build the fabric of the community that can not only sustain us over the long time when large issues arise, but that really catches us when we have a issue that is overwhelming? So again, a lot of talk about being a complete community, a city for all people, seasons, and generations. Angela, next. We did have conversations with several different entities, individuals within the community. We had conversations with our downtown businesses and our residents. There is always discussion about Highway 169 as a dividing point between the city. The historic Belle Plaine is north of Highway 169. It's where our traditional downtown is located. Most of the housing that's south of 169 was built in the late 1990s and up to this point. Demographics are much different between North Belle Plaine, South Belle Plaine. Our more affordable housing is in Old Belle Plaine on traditional lots with sidewalks and alleys and rear access garages. A lot of the housing to the south side of the highway is just traditional residential subdivisions. So garages forward, people come home from work, go in their house, and really don't come out and mix with the community. So different demographics, different lifestyles, and that was an issue for business owners in the downtown. They really wanted to reach out and try to blend north and south Belle Plaine. We had conversations with employers and parents about lack of affordable housing and different types of housing. When parents and elected officials and grandparents realized that their friends and relatives could not find a suitable apartment or an affordable apartment or suitable housing in the city of Belle Plaine, it became really an issue of equity. And we tried to just connect the dots, that not only is there inequity related to racial races, but there's also inequity in the built environment. So there's inequity in housing, there's inequity in park locations, and what happens at those parks, organized activities. We talked about the fundamental importance of addressing mental health and understanding the role of social health in the community and building an inclusive community. And that was actually led by our individual at that time, who was our police chief. And his concern about lack of access to mental health care and then lack of community coalescing around shared values. So we also talked about rejecting negativity toward those people at public hearings, especially as it related to high density, and high density for Belle Plaine is, you know, a four-story apartment building. We talked about gently pressing what others choose not to see. Again, we didn't straightaway convene a panel or have straightaway conversations because there is still a fair amount of the community who doesn't believe that inequity exists here in our town. We talked about facing the high cost of climate change. We had frequent rainfall events that were inundating our systems, be it wastewater through infiltration or stormwater. And we talked about, you know, when weather patterns become entrenched, we need to do something about that. We talked about understanding our rural strengths, the fact that there is a strong sense of independence in rural communities, in self-reliance. We're not going to run out and get something. We're going to try to make do with what we have, right? And the ability to bounce back. So those were just some of the conversations we had. And up next, Angela, is just kind of our process for community engagement. We had quarterly meetings of the mind. We had council-appointed officials from our EDA, our Planning and Zoning Commission, our Parks Commission, our Design Committee. We had senior staff, and we invited public, and we tried to do active outreach. So we had meetings focused on seniors. We had meetings focused on the business community. We had meetings focused on apartment, our rental community. We convened the process and direction and provided insight on individual elements. So we have a large element in the plan on community health, wellness, and resilience that resulted from our meetings of the mind. We had a mobile meeting. It was just one, but it was a fun meeting. We invited public to join us on a bus, and we had about 25 or 30 people, which is good participation for a community of our size. We invited them to hop on a bus and take us to a spot that meant something to them, and then explain what they did there, and who they saw there, and what made them comfortable there, and what made them uncomfortable there. So that again was a way to kind of foster understanding and try to connect threads. We had community events. We have a quarterly, or actually it's every other week, bi-weekly event throughout the spring and summer called Community Conversations. But we always have a draw. In this particular context, we had various staff presenting different elements and different threads of equity throughout the, that we were talking about in the comprehensive planning process. We also had a traditional open house. We met with businesses and with the chamber. And then we had several meetings with developers. Awareness of vision and results. We tried to make sure that we were not only trying to pull people into the process, but we were trying to push information out as well. So we use press releases, our city newsletter, our city website, and flyers that we created. You can go on, Angela. So some successes and some challenges, I think. I just grouped it all together under the heading of piecing together. We had uncomfortable discussions when we were out in the community, talking to individual members. I myself, I think, talked to at least 200 different community members. And some of those discussions were relatively uncomfortable. We also had to balance abstract ideas with granular manifestations. So our comprehensive plan, I mentioned, is kind of built and structured a little bit differently from traditional comprehensive plans in this particular area. We started out with a vision statement in each element, you know, what drives this element? That was the vision. And then our purpose statement followed that with, you know, how do we become successful? So trying to balance big picture items with, you know, the manifestations again. We committed to trying versus arriving. You know, equity, fairness, sustainability, stewardship, prosperity. Those are all something we strive for, not with something that we arrive at. And there are, of course, multiple manifestations. I talked about complete housing, complete transportation, complete park systems. During the time that we were updating the comprehensive plan, we had a little bit of political headwinds, but nothing like we have today. And I think my biggest challenge was trying to maintain integrity as a planner versus being viewed as an advocate and losing any sort of leverage that I had in the process. Next. So what are we working to achieve? Spaces and events for people to come together, to build capacity, to take on challenges. We want to be able to have truthful discussions. And that's not me wanting to be able to have truthful discussions. That's our entire elected and appointed body. And we want to build community resilience. We want to look for complete housing. We want to plan for complete housing. We want to arrive at complete housing. And we define that as physically adequate buildings in a complete neighborhood, so they have access to open space, to quality food, to schools, to transportation, and housing that's an array of housing values, types, and sizes. We're trying to convert every business lead into a success, and we are trying to reconnect to the Minnesota River, both physically and emotionally. And I think I have one more slide. What might success look like? Realization of our vision, or continuing to strive toward our vision of being a perpetually sustainable community that's complete and livable for all people, seasons, and generations. I think that is all I had. So thanks for listening.
Thank you so much. I'll stop sharing. And ask Raya to jump in, and we'll have a bit of a facilitated discussion. We've got some questions for both cities. And then I'll ask Chair Zelli to facilitate the council member participation, if that's okay. Raya, please, go ahead.
Thank you, Angela. Hi, everyone. My name is Raya Smiley. I'm a senior planner and the local planning assistant, CNN. Again, I want to thank both Julie and Mike, as well as Cynthia, for sharing their perspectives. I'm going to start with a big, kind of a big-picture question. And you, both cities alluded to this in many words, but I'm going to ask a hard question, actually. To better understand your perspective, do you have a definition of equity that you use in your city or in your plans? And maybe we'll start with Julie and Mike, if you have something that you would like to share.
Thanks. We don't have a specific definition, but as I put up that screen about, which is really more focused on racial equity, you know, the city council actually adopted a vision statement. But in our plan, we don't have a specific definition. I think our aim here is to look at equity across many different areas. So I don't know if you have anything to add?
And I think, Julie talked about this, the comp plan was really focused on choices, right? And the reason we want choices is because we understand that people have different needs. So I think that's what gets to the heart of equity, right? Is that everyone has different needs and challenges and life stories, and we need to be able to accommodate all those. And so that's where that community of choices kind of came through.
Finally, Cynthia?
And we actually did have discussions in one of our meetings of the mind meeting about a specific definition for equity as we thought that we wanted to strive for. And we defined equity as the fair, just, and equitable management of all institutions that serve the public, fair and equitable distribution of public services, and then the fair and equitable implementation of public policy, and the commitment to promote fairness, justice, and equality, or equity, excuse me, in the formation of public policy. So that was a conscious choice. Fair and just was really the driving force, and those were terms that were viewed as apolitical and something that would withstand the test of time.
So you both talked about equity and how it's integrated into your comprehensive plan. While we know equity is not really a requirement of a comprehensive plan, what are some key planning elements that are integral to advancing equity in your community? One example is zoning and permitting practices, but also programs addressing homelessness, aging, youth, health. So just kind of wondering what those planning elements are in the context of your specific cities. We'll start with Cynthia.
So I mentioned previously that we actually had a chapter or an element in our comprehensive plan on community health and wellness. And in that, we talk a lot about furthering healthy living, fit environments, including fit environments close to every neighborhood, social health, so involvement and inclusivity, planned activities, events that the city fosters, policies that we put in place. We talked about functional healthcare delivery systems because we, at that time, did not, we had one healthcare provider in the community, but, you know, limited access. We talked about growing an appropriate food environment. We have several people who can't afford to have a car, and we have limited transportation options. So we talked about access to healthy and affordable and culturally appropriate foods, and what that looked like, and what we could do to move the needle there. We talked about building community capacity. And I mentioned that we kind of looked at that as kind of building the fabric of community. But it's really about feeling connected to and belonging, a sense of belonging within the community, fostering a shared sense of responsibility, fostering a shared understanding, fostering trust to be able to have difficult conversations, and a net that will catch us in the event that something, you know, acute shock occurs locally, that we have built the ties that bind to be able to withstand that. And I think it's also, we had some conversations about being an emotionally intelligent body, governing body at that point, to be able to look back and learn from our mistakes and try to, continuing to move forward even as things change and as councils change.
Thanks, Cynthia. Julie and Mike?
Sure. Yeah, I think ours was as well, really focused around voice and access, accessibility to different things. So in our housing element, for instance, we talk a lot about the situation in Bloomington. And as Mike pointed out, just the fact that, you know, we have so many jobs here in Bloomington that can't support the median income household. So what are we going to do about access to housing that is affordable? We talk about access to the transportation system and removing barriers. We talk a lot about removing barriers, physical barriers, as well as other barriers, like language. like language barriers and cultural barriers. So we, we talk about those kinds of things. But it was when you asked which elements, I think it was really in all of the elements. It was really kind of woven through in all of them. And maybe more, more specifically addressed in the ones that are more physical, like transportation or parks or housing. You know, land use is a little bit more nebulous about how, you know, how you address equity in land use. But again, it was a lot about choice, about access and removal of barriers. Mike, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, I think I pretty much covered it. I mean, we can get into specifics, like we talked about ADA, you know, addressing ADA issues or specific things that were in our goals. But I think, yeah, that overarching, it was like woven throughout. I think housing really bubbled to the top, right? That it was the foundation for everything, making sure that people had adequate housing and knowing that that affects so many different elements, you know, and making sure that that housing is in the right spot with our land use and transportation. Now, it's all unrelated, but I think toward the end, it really kind of refocused us on housing.
Thank you. Just kind of following up on some of the, some of the thoughts that you have shared. If, can you describe any community initiatives or programs that resulted from these efforts in advancing equity? And I know that both of you talked about different efforts that you took during the creation of the comprehensive plan in terms of engaging community members, but maybe something that either was continued from that, like during the comprehensive plan, but also afterwards? Or that's something that resulted in saying, okay, we really need to create this one committee and keep going with it? Maybe we'll start with Julie and Mike this time.
Well, one that immediately comes to my mind is we had this group called the Bloomington Housing Action Team, BHAT for short. They were, and it partly came around, and my memory is a little bit vague, but I remember providing, there's the Bloomington Housing Coalition. It was a bit of a spinoff from that organization. And giving them a presentation on the comp plan. And then at the same time, there was a lot of discussion about some of these older apartment buildings is the naturally occurring affordable housing. You know, the concierge in Ridgefield that were being bought and sold. And there was a lot of displacement going on. So that was a huge concern to some of our residents here in Bloomington. And so kind of as, you know, I remember giving this presentation on the comp plan, and there was a lot of interest around the housing piece of it. And then, then we got into having this group and wanting to do some more things. And at the same time, the city started working on tenant protection ordinance and affordable housing opportunity, housing ordinance and all that. So that all kind of coalesced. But for a while, we were meeting with this group, this BHAT group, that included several residents of affordable housing here in Bloomington and folks from various organizations. We had, you know, the Housing Justice Center, representatives were there for a while, HomeLine was there.
We had property owners.
We had multifamily property owners. And that, that group has somewhat fizzled out a little bit and because they really coalesced around some of those activities, some of those things that we were doing. We were the tenant protection ordinance and the affordable housing ordinance. And then without having that sort of a end goal in mind, that the group hasn't met as much, as well as some people have moved out of the city, some of the residents. But, but it was a, it didn't have, it was very organic. It didn't have a official role. You know, they weren't advising on anything. They didn't take action on anything. But it was a venue with a group of people from various perspectives to talk about an issue that was very top of mind for a lot of people, which is affordable housing and in particular, preservation of existing affordable housing in Bloomington. So that's one concrete example of something that, that kind of happened or grew out of some conversations around the comp plan. Mike, I don't know if you had any things?
That was the one I had as well. But yeah, when I think about the opportunity, housing ordinance, which are inclusionary zoning, it seems like that was a big initiative right there that kind of came out of it and just recognizing that, that BHAT group was, you know, pivotal and providing that discussion that needed to happen from that different backgrounds to really support the why and the how and get to ultimately that ordinance. So otherwise, yeah, it's hard to say that was directly related to the comp plan. As we talked about, like with the strategic plan already in 2016, identifying racial equity, there's kind of worked in tandem that as an organization, it was just initiatives happening and, you know, acknowledged in the comp plan. But, you know, we have our, our community, we have our racial equity action teams that each division has. And I would love to say, take credit for that in the comp plan. But I think there is this greater push from council that we want to be more inclusive. So I think the comp plan kind of worked with what initiatives that were already happening.
It really all aligned, which is, doesn't always happen that way. But it was kind of a good turn of events that everything aligned.
Thank you. Cynthia? I think you're on mute, Cynthia.
Better?
Yes.
I can hear everyone now, too. So I lost connection there for a moment, so I apologize. So we are very focused on not just letting the vision and the action statements and goals and strategies included in the comprehensive plan sit on a shelf and collect dust. So the first question is, how does this relate to our comprehensive plan? If there's any proposed development or redevelopment activity? We're actually planning for a downtown improvement project. And in addition to the surface improvements being, you know, handicap accessible and having accessible entries into our businesses, we've also deliberately designed gathering spaces and places to provide venues where we can grow community capacity. We are looking at designing programs, or we did design programs to try to avoid passing on the cost of the improvements to the abutting property owners. We have several units of NOAA within our downtown above our business storefronts. And we really don't want costs of the project resulting in either higher rents or acting as a disincentive for property owners to keep their property up. So we're mindful of that and we're developing strategies. And we have developed programs to assist in preservation of NOAA. We're also working to hold information sessions and work sessions, trying to strengthen leaders' resolve in the face of public sharing opinions and not facts. And that being a barrier to affordable housing projects being approved. And then finally, we've deliberately designed community events and activities. We offer free swims. We intentionally try to develop different recreational venues that are low cost and don't involve a lot of gear to get into. So sledding hills or five Ks, things like that. So plan is actively being implemented, but of course, it's a destination.
Thank you both. I have one more question for each of you separately. And then I will hand the conversation off to Chair Zelli. So maybe we'll start with you, Cynthia, since we were just talking. What are some specific challenges of addressing equity in a rural community? So there's kind of like trying to figure out what this, what equity means for more than half of our region that is rural communities.
Yeah, I think the number one challenge is that there's a fair number of community members who believe we are inequitable and we are an equitable community, that racial inequity doesn't exist, that income inequity doesn't exist, that inequities in design of public venues and facilities and offerings doesn't exist. I think there's also sometimes, in this day and age anyway, a view that equity is cold, code for racial disparity, and that becomes politicized and really difficult to talk about. And I just feel like that's more pervasive in today's discourse locally than it was 2016 to 18. I think that there are a fair number of people who are uncomfortable in having difficult decisions or challenging, or excuse me, difficult discussions and making difficult decisions. And I think it's difficult keeping equity in the conversation. Sometimes as well, when we're planning, designing, or envisioning projects or reviewing developments as they're proposed. Think, you know, those are kind of thought-based, but there's also tangible issues, right? There's a push to move developments forward as rapidly as possible. And we all know that the best decisions result from deliberate, thoughtful processes. So I think that's probably the number one challenge. In our community, much of the built environment is fixed. And we don't have, you know, a lot of budget dollars for redevelopment or repurposing parks or redeveloping, refurbishing transportation facilities. I still think public opinion can derail projects pretty quickly, especially when it relates to affordable housing. And finally, I think I meant, alluded to it earlier. If you don't have a car in a rural community, you've got a problem. You know, you've got a social health problem because chances are you're not going to be able to get to in the middle of winter where you go to socialize, whether that's a place of worship or it's a local restaurant. It can be difficult. If you don't have transportation and we don't have transit, how do you get to a job outside of the community? Any employment opportunity within the community is likely going to be at a lower wage than what a community member would earn if they were driving to the Twin Cities Metro or south to Mankato. Elderly aging in place without transportation, you know, it's, it's, it's really difficult. So I think that's our number one issue. There are a lot of programs that have been put in place, Dial a Ride. There's once a day, every workday, bus transportation to a transit facility in Shakopee. There's volunteer drivers. But still, if you don't have a car in Dull Plain, you've got a problem.
Thanks, Cynthia. And Julie and Mike, as you were talking about the city of Bloomington's characteristics, we saw that it has very different characteristics between different parts of the city. How did you address equity considering those differing needs in, in various areas of the city?
Well, first off, by just identifying those. So, excuse me, in our comp plan, obviously, we have our analysis. And it shows those challenges that we have in terms of how did we try to involve residents. Again, we started with that citizen advisory committee. We wanted to have broad representation from folks across the community. We also did outreach that was specific. And I had pointed out that the one Spanish-speaking facilitated event that we, we had, we also used our coed staff. Well, before they were coed, they were still doing a lot of outreach. And they had already connections to community members in different groups in our community that tended to be underrepresented. And so we tried to get in front of those groups in terms of providing for engagement opportunities to make them aware of our planning process and try to find out what are their concerns? What are their hopes and dreams for the future of Bloomington? Those kinds of things. So it was really about trying to be intentional about how we got out in the community. Mike, can I think?
I think I would add that the Gateway District was kind of, kind of came out of the comp plan. I think Julie did mention this earlier, but, you know, the community development director heard about the work with the comp plan and kind of came up with, at the time, you know, oh, the Gateway District, this makes sense. This is where this part of the community was built more in the 50s and is ripe for redevelopment. Whereas as we went west, that was more the 80s and 90s and not quite there ready for redevelopment. So that was acknowledging those different needs in the, in the built environment. But it's always something that's top of mind when we're looking at how we do ordinance updates. You know, I'm looking at single-family zone right now, or zoning right now. And it's how, what works maybe on east might not work on west. So we're always kind of keeping that in mind, what, that we have different development patterns. And when we're doing that citywide analysis, you know, making sure we're not, that we're doing something that works in both parts of the city.
I'm just going to build a little bit more on that Gateway District. So concurrent with doing the comp plan, another project that we were working on that the council directed us to work on was a study of our neighborhood commercial notes. And I had mentioned, we had those three development districts up along 494 that over the last 15, 20 years, we have prepared very detailed development plans for those areas because that's where the vast majority of redevelopment in Bloomington will occur. But we've got lots of these old neighborhood centers, in particular, on the east side. And they need some love. And, you know, with the changing retail environment, et cetera. So we, we did a study and that was, happened concurrent. It's, it's discussed actually in the, in the comp plan, that, that study. And then there was the, the areas were prioritized and the highest priority areas were in the east side. And so our, when I was giving a presentation to the city council on our comp plan and we were talking about all these different things, you could see that there was a bunch of things that were kind of lighting up on the east side. And so our new community development director at that point in time, his eyes kind of lit up and he said, well, we need to kind of focus resources on, in east Bloomington and came up with this kind of this, we called it the Gateway District. And we do have, prior to, separate from the comp plan, a system of trying to focus our, annually, our public infrastructure improvements, like sidewalks, parks improvements, those kinds of things. And we tried to pick an area and focus on that. Well, this Gateway District became, you know, sort of like, okay, this is the area where we need to focus for the next stretch of years because this is the area that really needs some help. And so that was really kind of identified through some of the analysis that came out of the comp plan.
Thank you, Julie and Mike and Cynthia. Chair Zelli, I will now turn over the facilitation of the questions and comments from the council members to you.
Well, thank you, Angela, and thank you so much, Raya, but mostly Cynthia. Julie, Michael, this is really great to hear your very real and intangible process and to kind of know, sometimes we see things at such a high level and really is helpful to kind of see the practicality. So definitely, let's open it up. I know, Robert, you have been so patient with your question. We should start there and then certainly others might have comments and observations as well as questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am no one for my patience. And I was just fascinated. That's the first thing I would like to say is just thank you to our guest tonight. And I mean, this was really interesting to hear and how things play out in your communities. And, and thank you to Ms. Torres and Ms. Smiley as well for bringing this panel together. And I thought this format was just excellent and very informative. And I learned things from all of our speakers today. And one of the things that really fascinates me is the way we engage our communities. And, you know, some people are easy to engage, as I'm sure you're aware. And some people take a little more effort. And I think a theme that I kind of picked up from the work in both your communities is adaptability, adapting to changes in demographics or adapting in changes in, in different conditions. And even this new emphasis on equity, right? That's adapting to a new way of, of doing things. So I just really congratulate you and commend you all. Ms. Strack, I liked some of your innovative, the, the mobile meetings and things. And you used a term that I love. And you use a term that I love, which is hyperlocal. And I think that's something that is consistent across the entire region. I represent the heart of downtown Minneapolis, I'm a Met Council and then a lot of neighborhoods. And we're always looking for a hyperlocal kinds of engagement. And I just think that's something that we, we share. And, and I really want to commend you for being able to kind of wade into what you called at one point, uncomfortable discussions, Ms. Strack. And, and I think we're all, we're all familiar with what those can be. And, and I commend and applaud those in your community who are willing to, to step into that space. But I did have a really specific question for our Bloomington guests, for Julie and Mike. And, and, oh, and I also want to thank you for sharing that story of the east side and the, the neighborhood nodal efforts to look at these smaller sites that are ripe for redevelopment. And just kind of, you know, I'm not an expert in Bloomington demographics, but it was useful for you to show us that and seeing who lives, that you said. And that's where the opportunities are going to be. And they can either be, you know, opportunities for populations that are there that have been investing in this older part of your community and one that needs a little love. And I think you said, Julie, but, and so just that deliberate, deliberate focus on those redevelopment opportunities in what's now the Gateway District, which will be smaller in scale and less costly, but they may have broader impact when we're talking about equity. But my specific question, and you talked a couple of times, Julie, about the, your community outreach work coordinators and the coeds. And, and you referenced a couple of times that they were doing other things, community outreach related, before they were brought into this very, this defined position in this coed effort. And so I'm just curious what, what they were doing, where they were working. Were they around development or was this around public works projects? Or, or where these people came from before, where they were doing community outreach before they became specific community outreach specialists?
Sure. Well, they were kind of doing similar things that what they were doing. So they were just simply not organized and given an intentional budget that was focused primarily on outreach and engagement. But they were still doing that because through the years, it became clear that we needed to do more outreach. So all of the people that were in that division when it was formally named that coed had been working for the city. Some of them had been working for the city for a number of years. But then probably two of them had been, and there was like four of them. There might be more than that now. But they were, and, and they were tasked with helping convene events that were community events, like a kite day or, or, you know, different kinds of things that, that were around bringing people together in the community. And they also had already started to establish these relationships with a lot of these other, these groups throughout the city. So the Spanish speaking community, for instance. So they were already starting to do those kinds of things. They were very active in, in some of the types of activities that we've been doing for a long time, like National Night Out and, and helping to get those activities and do more outreach. So what ended up happening is that the council realized that we need to do more. We were doing some, we need to do more and we need to be very intentional about it. And we need to clear staff's plates so that that can be their primary focus as opposed to it being, you know, them being, say, 50% doing that and 50% doing other kinds of things. So that's, at least that's how I understand how, how they came together. But, but then they are, it is now very intentional and they are now assigned. So each one of the staff there is assigned a department or two as the liaison to help us. So whether that be to help us do facilitation for, say, internal kinds of things or to help us work externally, they have been tasked with working. You know, there was some tools that we've got. We've got, if you may have heard of Bang the Table as a kind of interactive tool. And they have been, they're kind of the, they're well versed on how to use that. We created a vehicle, we got an old retired city vehicle that became the Bloomington Engagement Vehicle, otherwise known as BEV. And they have, pre-COVID, they have, they had, you know, lots of fun toys, balloons, popsicles, whatever. And they would go out to events and, and people would call on them, you know, like Public Works is going to be doing a street project in this neighborhood. Bev, can you come out here and, and be part of this event? That, so, so I don't know if that really fully answers your question, but it, it, it's an evolution and now it's, it's an intentional division.
Well, no, great. Thanks very much. I appreciate it. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Great, thank you. Great questions. I believe we have council member Bento had her hand up next.
Council member Barber's hand was up before mine, so go ahead.
Well, go, you have sharper eyes than I do already. I'm telling you with great confidence, but you know, that didn't stop anybody. Council member Barber.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I really, I want to echo some of Robert's comments of how nice it is to have this great representation of a broad type of community. My colleagues will tell you that I speak often about the need to have a good understanding of rural centers and their impact on the region. And so Cynthia, I cannot thank you enough. You really covered so many of the things that I try to convey, but I think you did a much better job of it. And I think that I am so proud to hear you talk about both going out into the community directly and interacting at that level, because I do think that's what it really takes. But also having those both negative and positive conversations. Because I live in the northern part of the county, but I think we have a similar dynamic here where often there's the desire to grow, but sometimes the fear of change. And so having some of these conversations can be very tough. But I think that if you do it really honestly and, and with real purpose, you really help to improve the vision for your community. I saw that locally here in Shakopee. I know a number of our communities in Scott County did that, including Bell Plain, which you have all seen. So just really, really want to thank you for the, the high quality of the work. And I think that it really resulted in a plan that really reflects your community and where you want to go with it. And I'm glad to hear and, and I hear even through the communications of sort of the ongoing communication loops that keep going after this process. It wasn't sort of a, we're going to do this plan and be finished. It was an ongoing conversation that you started with the community that you can really feel. So I represent Bell Plain, so I am very, very proud of all of this and invite all of you out. You come out to your field trip. It's a beautiful little town. My favorite place is Main Street Donuts and Deli. And so you should check that place out. And I'm sure Cynthia would love to show you around town. So thank you and thank you for all the hard work.
We'll pick, we'll take you up on that offer. We should do a field trip.
I, I can get a bus.
Well, I was just going to say, we kind of be able to find a bus here. We know, we know people.
I know people. Thank you, Councilmember Barber.
Councilmember Bento. Oh, you may be muted.
Yeah, it's, it's only our last meeting and I'm still forgetting that.
Yeah, well, keep it.
I want to thank all of you. It's clear that you put a lot of effort into this and I really appreciate your presentations. I'm particularly sensitive, Cynthia, to the comments you made with regard to the, to the aging population in a small community without public transit. And I appreciate that. Now, the other issue that, for an outer ring suburb that I'm curious about is broadband access and whether that has been a factor for, for folks in Bell Plain.
Great question, Councilmember Bento. We are fortunate that Scott County has been instrumental in really developing a fiber web. So we do have fiber locally within our downtown to all of our city facilities and within our commercial corridors. We have several different local providers. We have local hubs as well. I know that just outside of the corporate limits, the Blakely Township has very, very limited access to broadband. Parts of Bell Plain Township do as well. So I know that is an issue. It is an issue for our school district, so it's an issue for our city as well, especially in an era of occasional distance learning. So it is an issue.
Let's see, we have Councilmember Gonzalez. You had your hand up.
Thank you, Chair. Great presentation and had the, the opportunity to stop at Bell Plain many times when I was going to school at Mankato State and living in St. Paul. Have to gas there all the time. While your comments about the difficult conversations in the context of a comp plan, I think that, that sparked a memory of mine, working with a community group in, in Mankato back in the 90s, that we were trying to assist mostly Latino migrant workers that will come to Southern Minnesota during the summer to work on a different agricultural plants in, in the region. And I remember a conversation that I had once with the major of one of the towns in Le Sur County, your neighbors. And the question was that we had the, the company, the ag processing company was interested in building a dormitory for migrant workers, again, mostly Hispanic coming down from Texas, because they were finding it hard to find affordable housing otherwise in the local community. But the major indicated that there was no way they were going to authorize housing for those people in the city, in their town. And if that means that the company had to close because they just couldn't find workers, so be it. That struck me because I, I just could not comprehend why will somebody really favor economic decline over growing simply because of who was going to join the community to work? I mean, it's not like they were taking jobs away from anybody. It's just they didn't want this particular group of people in their community. This was back in the 90s. Unfortunately, I do believe that those type of sentiments are still common. And my, my question is, how do you address this type of situation if making reasonable and logical arguments based on economic development does not resonate? Because that's not the concern that is raised by, by folks that might be in opposition to some of your plans. And if your elected officials try to push it and they push this type of ideas, then they might face, you know, losing the election next time. So that was a long comment, but my question is how you navigate that, doing what makes sense from a number of perspectives when the opposition is, to be honest, irrational and based on prejudice? And, and that goes to the heart of how you do economic and, and other types of development in a, development in a community. So thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez, is that a question for me?
Sure.
Or an observation?
Whichever way you want to take it.
Okay, okay. Your comments resonate with me. I have been in rural community development for over 25 years. And I've heard those comments and I've sat through those meetings. We in Bell Plain, I think it was a combination of things. And I hope that it's a lasting change in local perception and even process of meetings, right? We, when the Great Recession hit, our downturn was delayed. So we were building 250 residential units a year in the early 2000s. We issued exactly zero building permits for new houses in 2012. So the bills keep piling up, right? You still have to operate a wastewater treatment plant. We had added capacity earlier in like 2007. So there are bonds that needed to be paid. The city has to grow its way out of debt and to be able to service those bonds, but also to be able to save for the next expansion that's needed. Or if we had a well, we have to add reverse osmosis, which is also a major expense for our rural community. So there was an overwhelming sense among the community, we need to grow. We can't have our taxes continue to support capital investment. The only way we can find our way out is through growth and development. We have to take every lead seriously. We have to listen. We have to be able to stand up and be strong. We, you know, we had a Indian company that leases space locally. They make chemical plating, not water-based chemical coatings for the aerospace and the medical industry. They were looking for a parcel that number one was city owned and number two, that met the design aesthetic that's Vistushastra. They would not settle for anything other than that. Well, that was a great opportunity to talk with our EDA and our Chamber of Commerce and our city council and anybody who would listen about, we need to change policy. If we have a lot performance standard that doesn't, you know, allow us to move forward, then we have to do something about that. We also had training sessions. We brought in people to talk about how do you stand up to, you know, what are typical opinions that are expressed at public meetings? That my property is going to devalue. You know, crime is going to, to increase. So we, we armed decision makers with facts and information and did a lot of work meeting one-on-one with some opinion makers within the community that were not necessarily supportive of moving different projects forward. But we tried to meet with them one-on-one, understand what their issues were and tried to arm them with information as well. And I think the last thing that we do is we try to run an orderly public hearing process. So, you know, in your scenario, it might never have made it to the, the elected officials. But if it had and we expected a contentious public hearing, we would make sure that everybody was aware of the process, who the moderator was, what the time limits were, the fact that we were looking for facts and not opinions, that you address the moderator, you don't address the developer, you don't address the audience, you don't address staff. You know, if there are questions, those will be, if the, the moderator wishes to solicit a response, that moderator will do that. So I know there is a fair amount of negativity within communities still, but I feel like we are taking baby steps. So, you know, let's just keep moving forward. Long-winded answer, sorry.
Keep moving forward. I love that. Thank you.
Chair Zelli, if I could interject just really quickly. I know, I know that Julie needs to leave at 5:30, so I want to give her that opportunity to do so. And maybe Mike can stay for the city of Bloomington.
Julie, you got the, not the last word, but certainly a word.
Actually, Angela, I just sent you an email. I, my six o'clock got canceled, so I can stay. So, but thank you for considering that.
Well, I know Councilmember Chandler's had her hand up, so go ahead, Riva.
Thanks. I really enjoyed this conversation.
Thanks. Um, I really enjoyed this conversation. It's very rich with information and I like the fact that there's information sharing of best practices and ideas and hope that, uh, we get a chance to hear from you again as well as other cities. And hopefully there'll be a conversation even outside of the council with other cities so that, uh, that information sharing can continue. My question is, um, to Mike and Julie. You've mentioned, you know, the challenges that you have to retain existing affordable housing. What ideas or mechanisms did you put in place to manage, uh, the situation where perhaps, um, there were commercial buyers or cash buyers or, um, purchases that were, um, increasing, uh, the values higher than you expected on your housing?
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Chandler. Um, we have a tenant protection ordinance that got, uh, adopted and that does require notification of, of tenants if there's a sale of the property. So that's a 90-day, uh, notification kind of, uh, a thing. We, uh, also as part of that, there is a requirement that they notify the city that, that they are, are selling the property so that we're aware of it. Because a lot of, you know, we don't always know, you know, this is, these are private transactions that happen. So we may not know that this is going on. So that is, is kind of one of the main things. But I'm going to turn it over to Mike because he works, uh, somewhat with our HRA. And so he's a little closer to our housing programs than I am, so.
Yeah, so another key component of that tenant protection ordinance, besides the notification that a sale occurred, is that within 90 days, that the new owner won't raise rents, won't evict without cause and, uh, excuse me, and, um, uh, re-screen tenants. You know, the thought being that if, if they do plan to do that after the 90 days, that we can at least, uh, get a team together to help people that may potentially be displaced. We haven't, fortunately, we haven't had to enforce it. But we do have an internal process, again, trying to, if we don't get that notification, our assessing team, they get notification of sales, uh, when a new, uh, rental license should be applied for at the time of a sale. So that should be another trigger that we get notified that we can work with the new property owner and explain why we have this in place. Uh, so that, that's one avenue. You know, unfortunately, we don't have a great funding source to sweep in, swoop in and try and, you know, purchase ourselves. We had some success with, uh, Village Club, now renamed Blooming Meadows, that we were a partner with Aon and were able to provide some funding for them to go in there. And part of what made that project work was that there was land available to develop new units on. And so that helps with the cash flow. Uh, but that was a big, large project and the likelihood of us being able to do that again without a new funding sources. First of all, and, you know, we just keep hearing more and more how much the sales are happening for. So it's, it's almost unrealistic for a local government without some sort of external support and partnership to be able to, be able to be that. But we do track, I, we track our NOAA properties. We use, uh, CoStar proprietary database, which gives us rents, uh, per unit. And it's fairly accurate, gives us a pretty good, uh, um, understanding of all our properties. It has most of our properties. We're able to kind of cross-check that against our rental licensing and get a good idea of where the rents are and where rents are increasing or, um, where we are versus the, the metro. And so just by very nature, being able to track it, we can kind of see where there might be, uh, you know, investment happening or maybe a, a potential sale that occurs because, you know, different reasons. So, uh, that is something we're tracking, but I don't think we have found a solution yet.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sterner, we have your hand up.
Thank you, Chair Zelli. I just had, uh, one question for, uh, both of the cities here. And we'll start with, uh, Julie and Mike. Most of it's like a what's so, like you look at the redevelopment. I'm just kind of wondering, what's the status of the Sheep Farm and the redevelopment? What does that look like? And then the other part of this, the Valley View Park, uh, what's going on with that right now?
Uh, Councilmember Sterner, um, first of all, I'll start with the Kelly Farm. Um, that is, uh, for sale. The owners have the property for sale. The city had looked at potentially purchasing it, but that is, as far as I understand, is not moving forward. It's been for sale for, I want to say, the last five years. Uh, it is a challenging site. It's a beautiful site. It's right on the bluff overlooking the Minnesota River Valley, but there is challenges, uh, with it. Namely, the, the, the big ones are, it's right in the flight path. So there are land use restrictions. You can't do residential there. And it is a site that most people drive by and think, what a great place to live. But you can't do residential there. The other thing is, is there's evidence of, of Native American burial mounds there. Now, they've likely been quite disturbed after 100 years of the property being farmed. But nonetheless, uh, that's a concern in terms of redevelopment. And it may be that that will be a restriction on being able to redevelop the entire, I think it's 31 acres, uh, might have that wrong, but, um, and, you know, I think most people are looking, well, as, as I understand it, the, the property owners are asking a pretty premium price for, for the land. Again, it's a beautiful site, but when people go in and start doing their due diligence, uh, that's, there's a lot of barriers that come up and, and, uh, people get cold feet and, and walk away. It's also, we do have, have some regulations along the bluff that, that limit, you know, some of the bluff top development or bluff edge development, I should say. Cause the, there is a big chunk that is upland relatively flat that could be developed. But again, use limitations, cultural resources and noise. Those, those are, are some pretty big, uh, challenges for, for that site. With regard to Valley View, um, so that whole discussion got, was underway in earnest before, and then it kind of became contentious. And then, uh, the Parks Department started doing the Parks System Master Plan Update. And that's been going on for the last two years. It was just adopted this fall. And in that, they, uh, the, the idea has shifted away from a singular kind of, uh, community center to what's being called multiple centers of community kind of. So, and that's vaguely defined. So there is no, you know, next step yet firmly defined on the community center. It's kind of a, a yet to be determined, but, um, the plan that had advanced is pretty well stalled out at, at Valley View. That, that plan is pretty well stalled out.
Okay, well, thank you. And then I guess my one for, uh, Belle Plaine, Cynthia, just, it's kind of like you've kind of alluded to a little bit, but I just maybe was drawing a little bit one, but you mentioned it was very the controversial topic. And I know like sometimes it can tear cities apart, but if through your communications with development and bringing groups together, is it kind of like the rearview mirror? Or is that going to come up with next election where now it's going to go back again? Or is that kind of like the communities, you kind of brought the community together with that issue and the new council members coming in?
Councilmember Sterner, I think it brought the community together. And I think it, it strengthened the decision-making capacity of the council. You know, there were promises and, or threats, I guess, whichever way you look at it, that, uh, the next election, just wait. Well, that didn't bear fruit. It, it, you know, uh, I can't tell what will happen, uh, 10 years from now, but I think it, it, uh, brought the community together versus drove, it, uh, separated people.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I'm complete.
Well, thank you, councilmembers. So some great questions and really a great conversation. I, we kind of look forward to being in person in your communities as you, as someone has suggested. Uh, any other thoughts from anyone over here? All right, well, Angela Rea and certainly, uh, uh, you know, uh, Cynthia, Michael, Julie, really appreciate your, uh, conversation and your hard work and your willingness to come and share, like, your, what your planning progresses been and, 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 um, and really getting to the heart of some of the issues that we all care about, but we're always learning. I want to kind of shift and we have, I want to respectful, um, of everybody's time. We have 20 minutes and I know Lisa Barhas has a presentation on some of our thrive planning process, some of the same subjects. Lisa, you, I know you can either expand or condense a presentation, but we may want to set it up and then come, come back to it, uh, uh, later. Lisa, it's up to you. Go, here you are.
Hi, Mr. Chair. Thank you, uh, for the opportunity. Um, absolutely. I'm happy to come back and discuss with you further, um, at another date, especially as we talk more about your direction for, um, how you would like to turn to the 2050 plan and direct us in that work. Um, and I know that we just posted those materials last Friday. We have a report that accompanies the presentation that has a lot of detail in it too. So maybe some additional time might be, um, helpful for, uh, more fruitful conversation with you all at a future meeting.
Well, I think it's really important work and I hate to, uh, to, uh, cut it short. So I think that's a good idea. And, and actually I really direct people to the presentation and the report, which is, uh, what we've really been asking about. So we'll have a chance to, uh, not just hear the presentation, but maybe gauge a little bit more. And, and we actually might be sitting around a table. Who knows? That might be a, a good thing. So, um, with that, we just have a few minutes. I don't know if anybody else has anything they'd like to share. Or Angela, you want to have a final word? That was a really great, uh, series of conversations. I would like to see us, i- if we ever have time to do that more with our, the communities that we really are, are working with. And, and we, we're always trying to find the levers that we can play, but it's all local, right? This is the message, you know, people have similar, but really tangible efforts that they're, that they're doing. And, and obviously there's themes in these 180 communities that we have engagement with.
Yes, thank you, Chair Zelli. Um, and I thank the councilmembers to all of you for participating and asking really great questions of our communities and making their visits so pleasant. So I really just, you know, thank you for that. One thing I could ask the council is, we do plan on doing more of these, uh, throughout the year. If you had, I was thinking climate, housing, there are, there are a lot of things that we can do because a lot of our communities are really doing exceptional planning work. If you have any specific topics that you would like to explore, if you have a specific community that you might want me to investigate, see what kind of work they're doing really well, I'm happy to do that and would, and would absolutely take, uh, any feedback you might have.
That's a, that's a call to action. We will get engaged with that. And I appreciate, uh, some of our, you know, the districts from where our council member, I think Councilmember Barber is describing, uh, some of this work. Councilmember Pacheco, you have your hand up.
I do, I did. And I just want to let you know that I am alive.
This is good to know.
I pop up every now and then. I, you know, it's, it's been, uh, a lot of tours. Uh, I asked, uh, Peter to provide me with the rainbow book. And so I know what purple and green and yellow and all these things were. He says, give me one rainbow book so I can figure this stuff out. And I had three meetings today. Uh, I should be done with most of my orientation. And again, Peter's been, uh, very, Peter and Sam both have been very good about scheduling these things for me. And, and hopefully I'll be more active in, in some of the comments down the line. But right now I'm just trying, just trying to get my, get my bearings, if you will. And I want to thank you and thank the staff. They've been really very, uh, patient with me as well.
It's great that you jumped in and, uh, you are freshly oriented. So you could, uh, teach us all what some of the things you've heard. With that, any other comments? This may-